You guys are good to go.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please rise and join in.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roles?
overlay supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Maya Sillie.
Here.
Councilwoman Powell. Councilman Martel.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're gonna start today's work session with the continuation of the comprehensive plan overview. Janice Shears here with us to talk about overlay districts and floating zones.
Yes, thank you, good morning. Thanks for having me.
Good morning.
I put a few things on slides just to help guide the discussion, sort of visual, but you know, it's really just to have a conversation. Just push forward, is that how it works? Is this like on? Oh, no, it isn't. Okay, so, you know, obviously, we all know that zoning began in the town in nineteen fifty-seven. So when we look at COs, we're always looking at, you know, that, you know, if it was predating zoning, or if it's, you know, consistent with zoning. And the zoning is largely what, when you look at the patterns of development in our town or any other town, really, that is what's laying out those patterns, is those zoning, but the underpinning to all of it is the comprehensive plan. So that the zoning is valid once there's a comprehensive plan in place, or a well-thought-out rational basis for having zoning, uh, for having, for an action that you're taking, for use, a land use. So this is all based on land use law. So, you know, we all face the issues related to growth and change, and that is hard to predict. We don't always know what's gonna come in the future. So these techniques are meant to, to provide you with some tools to allow for creativity and to allow for future unforeseen, you know, and not in a bad way, but just uses that you don't know that someone's gonna wanna do. The markets change, things happen. So it's nice to have some tools to know that, you know, you can change from one thing to another without changing an entire zoning every time, and then that may or may not work, you know, so. This I just took from the states, you know, there's a great document online, which I'm gonna give out to everyone after this, but it's called Creating the Community You Want Municipal Options for Land Use Control. And this is Department of State creates these publications, talking about, you know, sort of how to get to, you know, what do you want, what do we want? What someone in Hampton Bays wants may be different than what someone in Watermill wants, right? We always face like, well, that, you know, it's different. So that's why we do hamlet-specific plans, so that we could talk about things that people want, you know, in that hyper-local way. So these are, you know, some techniques, you know, regulation, obviously, local laws, public spending, and, you know, what you're putting your money into. If your goals are, you know, let's say, more recreational facilities, and you put money into that, that's, that's, you know, what your priorities are. Land acquisition is very successful here. Private techniques for preservation, that may be like a conservation opportunity subdivision, where someone only subdivides a portion and leaves eighty percent of a piece of farmland for farming. And infrastructure, location, and capacity, that's something that's big right now, right? Where you put your infrastructure is where you're going to get development. And that has been over historically on Long Island, why people never wanted any infrastructure. Cause it meant like, you know, if you bring the water out here, you're gonna bring the people out here, you know, right? So that was always a concern, but they came anyway. So you kinda still have to deal with it. Okay, so the meat of the matter today is about these tools, these techniques, these interesting ways that we can foresee and account for the future. And there's two names for them. I didn't make up these names, these are names that are out there. And they're floating zones and overlay zones. And this is talking about, starting with floating zones. It's a flexibility tool. It doesn't say, like normal zoning will say, this is this. No doubt about it, a floating zone exists in the abstract, you know, it doesn't, you put it in place like you have a tool there in your toolbox. And when you say, you know, we really need X, Y, or Z, let's pull this out of our toolbox and apply it. And that's where the floating zone comes in. It's just, it's not there yet, but the concept is there.
So is it, is it fair to say it's almost like a, a secondary zoning that exists only until there's something that aligns with that secondary zoning, that comes before the board?
Exactly. So you, um, you don't attach it to a particular parcel until a proposal is approved. So someone can apply for it, but it's still like at your discretion whether or not you say, I wanna put this here. And so it's a zoning action, it's a change. And that gives you more discretion and more accountability. And so it's nice because you could say, you know, um, I don't know, make up a use, it's like, I think of any kind of use that you might say, well, we want to have, let's, um, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank here.
R four.
There you go. Well, that was a little different, but yeah, you said best, and you said it can only go in industrial zones. But let's say you put it as battery energy storage could go in any zone, which nobody wanted, but if the zone met these criteria, and you would then have the criteria laid out, and say you could consider it if.
By being more stringent.
Right. If and when, are like the ideas here. Like if your parcel is over two acres, or five acres, or ten acres, if you're so situated that you're, you know, these conditions, you're nowhere near a house, and you're over, you know, these things, you could put those in these floating zones. And then when someone says, well, I wanna, they'll come in inevitably to see you or me, someone who owns a piece of property, and that's what they should be doing, what can I do here?
But there's already a lot of floating zones in existence, right? How many would you say? Oh, getting ahead of you.
Yeah, so I have examples, our multifamily, um, those are, that's the biggest one you deal with, right? The multifamily category. We have affordable housing, um, senior citizen. These are, these are zones that are not anywhere until you place them somewhere. Um, an overlay zone is a little different, and they're used interchangeably, but it, if you really wanna be like academic and technical, they're kinda different. But an overlay zone is like, it cuts across all zoning districts, and it says, you know, the aquifer is important in all of these places. So it's aquifer protection overlay district overlays on top of all the categories. And you have clearing restrictions, and it doesn't matter if you're one acre, half acre, commercial, whatever it is, you've got these restrictions placed on you. Usually the APOD is not in commercial areas, but anyway. You know, or like the cultural resource protection area in Shinnecock Hills. That's an overlay across all of Shinnecock Hills that says this area may have importance, or may have the, you know, prehistoric artifacts, or hopefully not, but like may have grave sites or something. So this is an important area that we need an extra layer of review, an extra level floodplain. You know, things that are like usually environmentally sensitive have these overlays. Uh, Central Pine Barrens, that's technically an overlay district. So that is what we're talking about when we kinda use that distinction. Floating zone is like a zoning action. And the, and the categories exist in the abstract, they exist, and they have, they have parameters. And they've been laid out by boards before you. And I would note that we'd like to come back and amend some of those, like affordable housing overlay district. That's a very old one, that's not, you know, twenty twenty-five worthy, right? It's got a lot of remnant things in there that we'd like to amend. But they exist until someone comes in and, and they exist in a way that says you can't even do it unless, and until, right, it has these parameters. But someone could avail themselves, so is their right to apply, and come and petition you and say, I would like to build these senior houses in this location, and it's allowed by this SC forty-four floating zone. Can I have this floating zone applied, placed on my property? And then we go through, it, the courts have said you have to look at it like a zone change. So people get upset over that part because it feels like you're changing the zone, you're allowing something that it was not there before, and now it's here. So, so that is.
Well, that, that is what it is, right?
Absolutely, but it, and there, there is questions that come to me anyway, that, you know, that should be spot zoning, that's not legal. It is legal, the courts have said, there was a landmark case, Rogers versus, um.
Tarrytown.
Tarrytown.
Sleepy Hollow.
This was the beginning of floating zones. And basically, as long as it's in accordance with the, you know, comp plan, and, um, you know, you have the power to do it, and there's been, you know, that's like the landmark case, but then further cases along the way have come. And it's always decided in the municipality's favor that you absolutely have this tool at your disposal, and it's absolutely valid use of zoning powers. So, and this was more of that, just basically, and also that no one has any standing until you place the zone. So somebody can't be like, you created a special senior citizens floating zone, and, you know, until you land it, it hasn't harmed anyone, right? It just exists in our code as a tool. So it's not, there's no standing to, um, challenge a floating zone until it actually is placed on a property through a zone change action. And then, of course, they would have, you know, to show, you know, that they're specifically harmed, as you know.
But the overlay districts are already on the.
Overlay districts are, are already placed, and those are the same way, like, you know, and they, they are usually an environmental protective feature. But we use the terms here interchangeably, right? So we often say senior housing overlay, or multifamily overlay. Because we say that, um, because the underlying zoning is still there. But technically, they're floating zones. So I mean, I hate to be confusing, but there is a distinction. I don't know if I had anything else on here.
Was it that the?
Once it lands though, and the zoning has changed, that's the zoning.
Yeah.
So it's not still existing underneath what it used to be, but with the overlay it is.
You would have to come back and change it back. And change it back. But it, it's not, we used to have PDDs, the old zone go away. It does, it does. Once you land a zone like that, that's the zoning. And if you wanted to change it back to what it was, or anything else, it's another zone change.
Need legislative action.
Yes.
But when you place an overlay district, it doesn't affect the underlying zoning?
Right. You're still R forty, or R twenty, or anything, and the overlay in that case is usually like, like your tree preservation laws, or your floodplain protection, or your coastal erosion hazard areas, or your, you know, cultural resource protection overlays, or pine barrens. These are overlays on top of things, which is, you may be able to get a permit for a house, but you can't clear, you have to have this, that, you know, all the things.
Aren't the, or, isn't the cultural protection overlay, isn't that already landed, though?
Yeah, the, the just, overlays exist.
Right.
They're, they're floating, they're like clouds above the land, like if you imagine like that, they exist. The floating zone doesn't exist or come into being until it's landed. Right. It exists in the sense that it's in the code, and you can avail yourself to look at that code and say, does this apply? People come in and say, you know, I want to do, you know, build some.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
It exists for our consideration.
Yes, but it's not there until you land it. And that's where a floating zone is a fantastic tool. However, there are drawbacks, which are the uncertainty, where people get upset. Where I recently read someone, you know, saying, wait a minute, I came here and expected my zoning to be this way, and I didn't know that these zonings were possible. And the courts have actually weighed in on that and said, you know, I had it here. It basically says, you know, you're not necessarily, like, you can't assume that something is forever and always. Like, you are, it, it is possible that, you know, the legislature is going to change something, and you don't.
But isn't that why the, isn't it the rule of thumb that the comprehensive plans should be updated every ten to fifteen years? I mean, I feel like that's what good long-range planning would be, to update the whole plan. And even though a board would like to have the discretion to land things wherever they choose, it doesn't seem like it's a well-thought-out plan to be able to do that.
I don't think the wherever you choose part is accurate.
But wherever they choose, if the board decides to land a floating zone, they can.
Zones have parameters. They say within a certain proximity to a hamlet center, or the, the property has to be of a certain size. So it's not wherever you choose. Those, those conditions have to exist in order for you to land, right?
Well, it's also, you know, to, to that point, even if you updated the comprehensive plan, oh, um, you know, these zones wouldn't cease to exist, they would be still part of the overall plan because they're things that we need, but we don't wanna set in concrete stone, this is where they can be. Cause when you start doing that, I mean, I feel like you start changing property values, you start, you know, it, it's just, you're really, you're pigeonholing yourself, and you're pigeonholing your zoning, and you're saying, this is where this is going to be, and it might not be the best place for it. And you might not have a developer that wants to put that there.
Exactly. So the comp plan is absolutely imperative to say, these, but it's always, you know, the conditions may change slightly, but your goals and policies are largely the same. Preservation is a huge goal, maintaining, you know, the character of our, of our hamlets, and that's a massive goal. That's like, I don't see those goals being stripped away.
When we went through, when we went through the comp plan, and we went through the objectives, and, and it was pretty much, we could say everything still was the same today, it's the same, we have the same goals, right? Limiting traffic, preserving, you know, land, protecting, you know, cultural resources. Everything is still pretty much the same. It's just, and, and I, and I get what the supervisor's saying, people want a definitive, you know, this is where this is gonna be, this is where we're headed, this is where we're going. There are so many plots out east for affordable housing, there's so many on the west. But to do that is really to basically predetermine land uses, which, you know.
So here it says, like, one concept that should be included in comprehensive plans is consideration for smart growth, which is, you know, the principles are, you know, use land efficiently, conserve the natural and ecologically valuable features of land even after it's developed, promote a mix of housing types, discourage sprawl, encourage a variety of transportation options, incorporate quality design focused on preservation and formation of neighborhoods and a sense of place. As, you know, other than, you know, people coming from different areas and kind of having a different design aesthetic or franchise corporate architecture, you know, those kinds of things. So you always wanna kind of incorporate, you know, these concepts into a comp plan, and then more specifically into a hamlet plan. But the, but the core principles of, um, putting your housing in an area where there's infrastructure, where there's walkability, you know, if you're gonna do affordable housing, rather than sprawl out, you know, into farmland, into woodland. We wanna kinda keep it in the core hamlet centers, and, and that would be, you know, if, if I had, more time, I would go through, and, and maybe we'll do this next time we're here for affordable housing, you know, well, how's the affordable housing overlay district need to be amended to envelop these kinds of principles, so that you know where you're putting it? And that's consistent with the comp plan.
I mean, so the supervisor brings up a really good point, right? I think, you know, the, the comprehensive plan has a lot of elements that are really important, that I think transcend the timeframe, as Cindy mentioned, you know, a lot of the same issues that we have today are what are mentioned in the, in the comprehensive plan. But I think the supervisor brings up a good point about long-term planning, and just making sure that we establish those parameters in a concrete way. I think that's really important. That said, and this is where I think maybe we've had discussions about this, and it's worth bringing up here. In, in certain circumstances, where the, the, the long-term goals are already established within the zoning, the, the proposals that maybe come before the planning board are decisions that are made before that body. And sometimes that, I apologize for that, sometimes that happens to not necessarily go in, in, in the way of, um, giving people the prerogative of, is this what people truly want? Because the planning board, right, is, is really looking at what the zoning states, correct? And that's it, that alone. In this respect, what you're talking about here, if we are to adopt a more comprehensive, for lack of a better term, um, um, overlay, that's giving the board perhaps more of, um, determination, discretion over what comes before us, right?
And that's it, your discretion, that's what the beauty of it is.
But I, you know, uh, uh, it's just inconsistent with the way that I was always, um, informed that you're not supposed to change zoning if it's inconsistent with the master comprehensive plan. And this is allowing us to do that.
You, you really, though, I, I don't know, I thought what we were doing was up, I thought you wanted to update the comprehensive plan.
I do, yeah, I do.
So it's thought of as your, your, your playbook, right, your rulebook.
Right.
It should be, though, also thought of as a living, breathing document.
Yes.
That over time, whether you do little things, like little individual changes of zone, or little individual districts, or you decide to undertake an entire overhaul of the whole thing, which would be done like you, maybe every ten years, like you suggested. That, that is correct. That's, that's how you look at it, and it's your, it's your playbook.
Right. And it's not just general concepts, it's specific recommendations that come forth in a, in a comprehensive plan, isn't that right?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and then what you're supposed to do is then look at the zoning. After you adopt that whole plan, you don't just put it aside, you make zoning changes based on that plan to implement it.
That plan will recommend and show what the zoning should be.
And I'm not disagreeing with you in any way, but I'm not saying that floating zones are inconsistent with the comp plan at all. They're helping you implement the comp plan. Where you land them should be consistent with what your goals are in the comp plan.
Part of the comp plan is the need for affordable housing.
All of this is to do it that way. So if you say, I have senior housing, um, someone came in for senior housing on a piece of property, that, and the comprehensive plan says, we are needing senior housing, then you would look at it and say, okay, does this make sense? Is this so situated in a way that we'll accomplish our goals for senior housing? And the other environmental goals for, you know, the environment, like can we coexist with the environment? Where people are part of the environment. I'm not saying, you know, overdensify anything, but I'm also saying, people live, people live here and need to live here, and older people, if they have a place to live, that's a good thing. People who have lived in this town their whole lives should not then have to leave when they're, you know, seventy years old now, and you're kicked out, cause you, you know.
Of course not.
You should be able to have a place. So preserving and creating senior housing, for example, is consistent with your comp plan.
Right, but I think that, I, I just think it needs to be more clear, perhaps, that when you do the comp plan overlook, and say, one of these things that you wanna do is to look into revamping our senior housing, um, district, you're gonna have in there standards, so that you're thinking through, in a long-term way, where this would be appropriate. So right in that creation of that specific district, you're gonna have, needs to be five acres, ten acres, needs to be X amount of, um, feet from X, needs to have transitional yards, needs to have, that's all gonna be in there, you know, growing, it's gonna be living and breathing, so that when you place it, it's a well-thought-out already zoning that you probably see.
Which we have. So we have SC forty-four. And could any of these be amended and better written? Probably, they're, they're.
It's SC forty-four.
Senior Citizen Forty-four is current in the size of the parcels.
Are you saying that overlay, the overlay zones are essentially, those would be established to help us implement the comprehensive updates?
Correct, yes, absolutely. It's your, it's an update of your, it's really an update, the comprehensive plan is an update of your priorities and goals for the town, and what you wanna see, and as things evolve and change in terms of uses, you can't account for everything now, and now we have different uses that might have been considered noxious in the past, you don't want anything. But now, because of the way things have evolved, it's not so bad, and maybe you can, you know, blend it into other things. Like those are, there's just evolution.
It's also looking at current day needs, right? Now that we have the CHF, and there is this great need for affordable housing, you know, does that overlay zone change to allow it to be not so stringent on where it has to be placed, but allow it to branch out some, to give you more areas in which to put it?
Right. Or do you wanna be, let's put it only in these locations that make the most sense for our town? And like, so that way, everybody who, you know, you're looking at this woodland next to you for thirty years, and the next thing you know, it's got a huge affordable housing thing on there, and it's, you know, very far away from the hamlet center, it's sprawled out, you know, you could say, no, I don't, you know, the, the plan here is to make efficient use of properties, locate in places where there already is infrastructure, maintain the environment and character, you know, like you're always looking to hit all the points, not just one point. So you want, so the, so each one of these overlay districts, if someone comes in, when you set them up, they're already set up for you, and you get all these applications, and you, you may be thinking, why is this happening? Why is everybody asking to change these zones? They're not there asking to apply these floating zones. And there is some unpredictability there, and there is, but there's also, it's, there's two sides to this, right? There's, you couldn't possibly, like you were saying, Councilwoman, you can't possibly plan for every last use that someone's gonna get in their mind that they wanna put in there. They have their own business ideas, their own financing, their plans, and they're gonna wanna come in and propose something, rather than you tell them what they're gonna do ten years from now. You don't know what they're gonna do. So you, you have to be able to have something to account for someone coming in, and those things should be aligned with the comp plan, and be, you know, um, set up in a way that you're comfortable when someone comes in and asks for it, that it, it, it's the criteria within the floating zone is consistent with what you want, and what each hamlet wants. Most people don't want anything, and that's the problem. So that's where it all falls apart, cause you can, the best-laid plans, and somebody just goes, we just leave everything the way it is, but that's, life is dynamic.
But on the other, on the other side of that, like, we were very specific with cannabis, right? Cannabis can only exist in highway business. And then people are now saying, you know, like, didn't even know this was highway business. Why is this highway business? Because if you look at the, if you look at the zoning code, highway business, there are a long list of things that can live and exist in highway business. And people don't want all of those things necessarily, but they're permissible, they're allowed, as of right.
Right. And I think that's the biggest takeaway here, is that if you were to say, okay, well, well, we'll just make it a special exception, you know, whatever this so-called use is, and go to the planning board, and you can create those criteria. But if you want more control, then it should come to this board, because you're the one that would say, we're not even elected to consider, we're not even considering this, or, yes, this makes sense to us. And then you entertain it, and you get public input, and you make a decision.
I think, I think it should come to this board, because we are elected officials, and we are more accountable to the people than, say, the planning board. You know, they're, they're appointed by us, yes, but it gives us that layer of, well, it's them, it's not us, you know? Whereas if, if things that are, you know, controversial or questionable come before this board, people can say, hey, wait, I, I elected you to represent me, this is not what I want, and therefore, I don't have to vote for you again. So.
Yeah, so there's that, and that's important. I mean, so if you create a special exception standard, and someone comes before the planning board, first of all, those special exception standards can be varied, somebody can go get a variance, and then the planning board can't do anything about that. And then, you know, that useful, and that was the, you know, problem with many uses. So I think having the floating zones at your disposal as a land use tool, and then looking at them over time, and fixing them to make sure they're consistent with the comp plan and any updates, is how, the way to go. And then from there, you know, you can create new ones.
My only, my concern is, and not referring to anybody here today, but I feel that, you know, there have been instances when it allows the board to overlook, or, you know, do something that wouldn't necessarily be allowed. And like, maybe a housing is not within a mile of a downtown, and maybe there's no public transportation, and maybe it's quite dense for the area, but the board approves it anyway because they can, cause they can put that floating zone there. And that's what concerns me, that of course, as a board member, I would like to have flexibility, but I just don't know if it's the most prudent thing in terms of long-term planning.
On, on the flip side of that, you had best, which was a special exception, right? Which went to the planning board, directly to the planning board, bypasses board, cause it was a special exception. And you had the planning board saying, our hands are tied, this is in our code, it's allowable. And then the, the public brought it to the board for a moratorium citing all these safety reasons and issues. And the board had to take another look at it, and therefore, you know, we started the moratorium, we did the whole thing. But as a special exception, it went to the planning board, and the planning board kind of was like, no, it's, it's an allowable use, we're just meeting within this, and, and it is what it is, and, 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 you know.
I thought this board wrote the code, and, you know.
Now, in hindsight, we should have put a cap on the size and the locations, but we didn't, the planning board didn't come up with that, right?
It was, no, it was done as a special exception, but, but using that special exception in, in the zone code, they went to the planning board with an application, they didn't have to come to, it wasn't a floating zone, therefore, they didn't have to come to this board and have us elected to consider to place that best there, they didn't, you know, it.
But this board adopted legislation, unless I'm confused.
No, this board did adopt legislation, but they didn't adopt a zoning district. They made it a special exception use within certain zones. So once you met those special exception standards, you didn't have to come here, you went straight to the planning board. I, I think what you're voicing, I mean, when you have, you're saying the board can ignore, it's supposed to be with one. They can, but they're not supposed to, right? So that's what the issue was when PDDs were a thing, because the board could cherry pick what they wanted, and really. Because the board could cherry pick what they wanted and really customize it. And people were very uncomfortable with that because they would come up with things that were nowhere. It would appear out of nowhere. They weren't written anywhere that those were the options. I think with these, with the floating zones, it's trying to protect the you from those kinda criticisms because it's laying out what you want in those zones and you are supposed to act in accordance with that when you land them. You're not supposed to be burying them unless the zone says within a range. It gives you a range of, but otherwise. So you have those protections there and it's not a PDD type thing, which I I think is what you're you're, you may be speaking to. Or maybe there were boards where we didn't look at all the, follow all the things, but you're supposed to.
Well, that's true. And so maybe what we really need to do when we update the comp plan is to make sure we pay specific attention to what those floating zones are and if we, you said it, if we need to tweak some of the parameters.
I think so, yeah.
In light of changes in the.
What you're talking about now, being near transportation, county does on-demand bus service. So pretty much almost everywhere is near transportation.
Great on-demand service.
Well, I, look at the one we just talked about last week. Um, you have a five acre zone, which only allowed so many houses. But now they're asking for thirty-four rental units. That's not consistent with the zoning, but the MF floats. And you can land it there by saying, wow, it's right by SYS. It's it's close, it's just on the edge of half mile to the downtown. So you'd make findings to justify why this makes sense. Even though technically the zoning is a five acre zone.
It has on-demand bus service.
Has on-demand. So you would then in your, you know, if you were favorable to this, you're gonna consider it and there's gonna be SECR, we're gonna look at all that. Um, you would make those findings and say, well, and the public good outweighs, you know, and you you kinda you're making that balancing act. The environmental, social and economic um considerations come into play. And though, so even though like that's the thing about, you know, zoning from nineteen fifty-seven or even nineteen eighty-five or two thousand is not the same as what you're dealing with in twenty twenty-five or what future boards will deal with in twenty fifty.
But I think it's really important to differen- and I think I I I'm glad that PDDs were brought up because I think it's important to differentiate the fact that what we're talking about here is established secondary um requirements. It's not, it's not just like a a arbitrary thing.
Correct.
As as Christine, you you highlighted as what PDDs might have offered the board, this is much more, oh, that, sorry. This is much more established within what you're saying, comprehensive plan.
Yes. Although, you know, as the person that worked on PDDs for many, many years, um, the one thing you're missing is that you don't get off-site or public benefit. You don't have incentives anymore. The PDD was an incentive zone. So that's a different tool entirely.
And that was attractive.
It is the community benefits and the off-site um.
But it's also what led to people thinking it was like a pay-to-play, like depending on, it was, it was.
Yeah.
You know, whatever you came up with.
But that was the difference with that. So that's another tool and it's called incentive zoning. And you could create a different kind of incentives. The idea and and the Hamptons, this isn't as important, right? Because there's, there's, you know, it's it's well um established uh developers who have, the incentive is just the people who live here and are going to avail themselves of things. But in other places where you're, they're trying to attract economic development, they need someone to come and invest. Their their place is disinvested. Those incentive zones make sense in those places. Here you didn't really need that because if you want a sidewalk, you'll just put it in your budget to build a sidewalk, right? So but in in a place upstate somewhere, they don't have that opportunity. They need a developer to come in and they'll give them increased density if they achieve things that the community wants.
I have kind of a broader question as far as the comp plan goes and and, you know, not that I don't support undertaking a review or an update. Um, but there have been a lot of additional additions to the comp plan. It's not just the comp plan, right? So we did the climate action plan. Um, and when we did that plan, you know, to the supervisor's point of wanting things to be more concrete and more laid out. I don't think that you do that through the comp plan, you do that through your actual zoning codes, correct?
Well, the the zoning is only valid if you have a comp. Right?
So we would still have our comp plan.
But it it has to. You can't just have, you can't have zoning that doesn't.
A nice undertaking would be, let's just look at all the policies and things from the comp plan. Confirm or say, well, this is not relevant anymore. No one even does that anymore. This is from, you know, which isn't really there. But you can say, these are confirmed things, these are our policies, this is twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, whatever the year is. Are these still our goals? And then you look at your zoning code, to your point, and say, is this reflective of what we say we want? If you say you want affordable housing and every single code locks somebody out of building anything other than two units, then it's not consistent. And that doesn't make any sense.
But so to that point though of the of the actual plan and it and it following zoning, when the climate action plan was done, I remember this quite clearly. We took everywhere in that plan where it said shall, right? And we changed it to may and should. Because we didn't wanna lock future boards into having to do what that plan stated. It was kind of, it became a.
Recommended.
Recommendation, not a, not, so we removed shall from everywhere in that plan so that we wouldn't tie the hands of future boards and future zoning.
It's still part of the the plan.
It's still part of the plan, yeah. So I mean, that's my whole thing. So the comp plan is pretty much like recommendations and your code is the code that is in place based on those recommendations.
Yeah, but you have to have that underpinning, that priority. Like if you say, you know, our priority is X, Y and Z. And instead your code is implementing A, B and C, they're not.
I mean, cause the comp plan itself is still pretty much, when we were going through it, it's all the same theories and ideas that we had back when. I would actually, like you were saying, like to look at all of the additional plans and, you know, the the additional studies and plans that are now part of that comp plan. The comp plan itself is a pretty benign document. I mean, it has overreaching goals, which I think are still in play. But there's a stack of. Additions.
Well, that's all folded in, right, to the updated.
That's been, that's been my point that I've been, that I've been speaking of. Like we have all these addenda and like we need to try to find a way to wrap that all in.
And that's what the update, I thought, would do.
And get rid of the ones that no longer.
It get rid of is an interesting thing because.
Always gonna exist. But like when we look at, we look at things and when they were done, you know, things have changed. When you get into like the very like, you know, corridor plans and 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 stuff like that, they were very time-specific for, I mean, thirty-nine has changed. You know, when it was two lanes and then we had the added lane and, you know, that has changed.
No doubt. I mean, but those plans exist in as much as maybe they're um relics. But they're also, I can tell you that we go back to that nineteen seventy master plan and be like, what did they think? And then we go to ninety-nine and say, what did they think? And then I go to two thousand six, what was the thinking then? So yours would be the thinking in twenty twenty-five, but all taken together, you start to see a progression of time of of intent that then influences, you know, um, you know, I, we joke around and say, you know, we start out, the the earth cooled and then there was the colonists and then, you know, cause we have the history back to literally sixteen hundred. We we can go back to sixteen forty.
Yeah.
And see the settlement pattern from, you know, right here in the village and and it's just moving forward. So I I think those things exist then as as academic, you know, reasons to be like, what did they think they wanted back in twen- two thousand six when they did that plan? But yes, you should update it because there's different people now. People have died and priorities have changed. You may wanna say, well, now in twenty twenty-five, we think X, Y and Z. And I mean, and by we, I mean the collective.
Well, certainly traffic has changed and so there has to be a traffic component and maybe the recommendations will specify where the consultant thinks it would be most beneficial based on all the data to have some traffic circles or, you know, some, I don't know what. Um, you know, that's what, that's what I foresee, it more of a a roadmap to.
Right, and we have those roadmaps. But the the interesting thing is that we get them and they get done and then everybody has a new idea about what to do and and no one really wants to go back in that plan and say, what was the implementation?
Part of it is political will. I mean, you know, it's it's really about, you know, here are the goals, here are the recommendations. Now let's act on them. I mean, right, we have to take action on some.
Spend the next year just acting on all the implementation items of the previous comp plans and that would be a lot.
Yeah, but what maybe we, we wanna evaluate it cause it's thirty-five years old.
Maybe that's a good next, maybe that's the a a good step, next step for our work session is what are those action items and we should evaluate them as a board.
Yeah, or that you would do that in the comp plan update, obviously, to the supervisor's point. But yes, we can, we can implement, like you, you had this recent Hampton Bay's uh highway business implementation that was in a plan and uh I read, you know, in the paper like, oh, this should be a lesson to you to implement it sooner or something. And it's sorta like, we're at the ready to implement whatever the board wants to work on. So the implementation has been the Riverside story, right? That's like ten years in the making from a comp plan. We've been working on implementing that. You're working on implementing, you are doing implementation, right? You're doing, you're putting in things that our recreation plan said. You're doing things that are, you know, are absolutely coming out of the comp plan. So it's just a matter of what do you wanna focus on and what priorities do you wanna set? And and doing the update helps focus you in on on that.
Well, we did put money in the budget last year for the, you know, to, for the update. And then there's a new uh grant, I don't know if it's new, but I just saw it, that Jennifer Messiano mentioned to us about comprehensive plan funding from the state and it's a lot of money. So, but she said you need to have something to submit for the grant, you know, you can't just say, we wanna update our plan. So what she was suggesting is that we come up with, what would the parameters are in a, of an RFP be?
Okay.
Is that something that we can work on internally? I say we, even though it's really you. But we don't need a consultant to just come up with the RFP. I mean, and you, I think you sent me something al- already that had, you know, maybe topically, what what the RFP would include.
So I just see the floating zones as a way for the board to react to current situations and needs that we have throughout the town. So every zone lives on its own, right? It's not setting a precedent if we zone for a water park. And now everybody with a five acre parcel thinks they can put in a water park. That's not true. They all have to request the floating zone. They all have to go through the process. So we're not really changing the zoning, we're just filling a need or filling a certain, you know, area that we need. We have a need. So, I mean, I think it's a good tool to have in your back pocket. I don't know if we wanna use it very often. But I think it's something that we should have the ability to do.
Great, and we, I think that in the case of the um recent conversations around the boarding barn, switching to a hotel, it would be better suited to have an overlay zone for the hotel that they can apply for versus everybody. Because when you enact a zoning, like a special exception, it has to be equally available across the board and that would open up a lot more parcels. So um downstairs, we'd be just looking at like, I think it's a better option to create a floating zone for that purpose. And, you know, if that, you know, versus having fifty different people, like you say, on the merits. If somebody else wants to apply for that and they're so situated that, you know, with the conditions we place on it, they could. But it's not just like an open.
But how do we then, how do we evaluate without, I mean, if it's, if they, if two applicants meet the conditions, how do we say yes to one and no to another?
Every single one stands on its own. They're discretionary. So it's not the same as like a zoning board of appeals and a precedent. It's not. It's a zoning action and that's the beauty of it. As long as you're looking at them similarly and you're holding them to the same standards similarly, you can make whatever decision you feel is best. And you can even say, I'm not even considering. I'm only considering, you know, one this year. I'm not doing, you know. Special exception, everybody who wants to make an application just comes in. There's no stopping anyone.
And that's why we go through the whole secret process so that we're basing our big decision on facts.
Facts and also just, you know, like it it's public sentiment of the fact that, you know, this is not the way this community wants things to be. That comes to you in a discretionary way and that's a good thing.
A- as in any typical zoning change procedure. If we were to say, in in this scenario, be okay with something, it would advance to the planning board still.
Yeah, because you're approving it in concept. We ask for a lot of information because the public hearings happen here.
And that would trigger SECR.
And trigger SECR. And in that case, you'd be the lead agency. But um, you you know, technically, the planning board, it's just really a zone change is supposed to be a conceptual plan and the planning board then gets more specificity when they come there. Um, you know, with PDDs, we would zone it out, we would literally write the zoning around the whole thing and they would be like, why even come here? You know, I remember John Blaney being like, what are we picking out the flowers? You know, he didn't, you know, they didn't appreciate that. But that was, you know, was very, very specific. Here now with floating zones or any other zone change, it's conceptual. And then the the details get finalized at the planning board.
So we have light industrial zoning. If somebody came with uh and wanted a floating zone for light industrial, that's something we would incorporate or we would change the zoning?
Every floating zone is its um landing it is a zoning chain and action. The action of landing it follows your normal procedures of three thirty, one eighty-five. But we don't have any light industrial floating zones. So we're missing a couple. So when you, we do this update thing, you know, I think we're missing a few. We're missing like this hotel one, which I'd rather do sooner than later. Um, instead of change the code so that, you know, anyone can, you know, or not to say it's specific to them, but just a lot more applications can come in through a special exception versus keeping it to a zone change process. Um, and you can equally evaluate them and not stopping anyone from making that application. But so we don't have, say, what you're talking about.
Um, but is the special exception's different from a floating zone, right?
A special exception goes to the planning board, which is more of a confirmatory board. Do they meet the standards? Yes or no? That's really it. There's not a lot they can do to deny things if they meet the standards. Very hard. Versus your board, which is discretionary, you say, this doesn't make sense or I don't, you know, the community isn't against it. It's a zoning, you know, it's a zoning change, which is discretionary and it's set up that way for for this very reason, that you are accountable to the community. And if you don't wanna do it, you don't have to. Where the planning board, if they meet the standards, they really just don't deny it.
And we can't change the zone just in uh that one area. Because I think, you know, we all think that a hotel, that Hampton Bay's location would be great.
Right, so you would create a floating zone, not just tailored to them, like what you think the parameters would be for anyone. And they would apply for it and then you would land it and then they go on from there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, without doing it through a floating zone process that anybody could avail themselves of, as long as they meet the parameters, we would be spot zoning.
That's the con- that's the typical concern because you don't really have anything that says.
If we said you can do a hotel here in this, in this parcel.
Yeah, so, yeah, that would be spot zoning.
And, you know, yeah.
Cause nobody else could avail themselves of.
Right, and you're only doing it for one specific thing and that's called spot zoning. So that's why. So that would be one I'd like to bring forward sooner than later, but any others, and the other one is the affordable housing overlay district. That that one's an old one that people don't avail themselves to because it's basically R twenty, you get one unit for twenty thousand and that's not gonna do much for anyone. So we, um, yeah. So so I'll send uh some follow-up, you know, information, but this is just, you know, along the lines of these planning tools. You have overlay zones, you have floating zones, you have incentive zones and you have your regular zones and you can create new zones. Um, so you have a lot of uh flexibility to help everyone uh get to the point, you know, where it it's predictable. But it's also flexible. Thank you for your time.
Good, good update.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the Supervisor Town Council Members Liaison Updates. Rick, let's start with you this week.
Yeah, so I just have one today. I just wanna mention that our next, the last concert in the park is tonight in Good Ground Park. It is sponsored by the Irish American Society. There's a special appearance by the pipe and drum bands before the concert, so it should be a good night. And then I did wanna m- uh mention on a very sad note, you know, Councilman Bouvier, who I served with for four years. Uh, his son did recently pass away and the services are uh tonight um at the Werner Rothwell Funeral Home in West Hampton, I believe from five to eight. Um, and uh, you know, I wanna, will be there, but I wanna give our uh condolences to, you know, the Bouvier family. And anybody who knew John may wanna show up tonight, so I thought it was worth the mention.
Thank you for the reminder on that. Let's see, I uh went to yesterday a tier three training that Suffolk County FRES had in Yap Hank on emergency preparedness, which is timely cause we do have some weather headed our way. And uh Ryan Murphy went, Chris Hansen, Tara Farrell, and it was just um, just an overview of what what you need to be thinking about. And, you know, and uh we all, I'm sure we all feel that our first obligation is the. You know, and I, we all, I'm sure we all feel that our first obligation is the safety of the public and so. I'm grateful that we have a team in the public safety department that's um so skilled at managing information and communications. That's really so critical, it's very chaotic when there's an event taking place and they need to be able to. Synthesize everything and 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 keep everyone informed and they do a great job of it, so I was glad to be there and get some more information. And uh as the storm hopefully goes off to the east, but I'm sure Ryan will keep us all informed of its trajectory.
Very important.
Yeah.
Um, so just a couple of updates, um, I've been working with Police Department Chief Kieranin and um. Uh, C, our CTV team, we're, we're trying to get the uh e-bike uh safety tips and information video up there. Just have a couple of things that we're working through, um, but we wanna just get the word out, a lot of really interesting information has come out of this. Um, specifically, you know, if um e-bikes don't have pedals, it's actually not considered a legal e-bike. Um, uh, you you really can't be riding them on the sidewalks, we've received some complaints from constituents that these e-bikes are becoming a little bit. Uh, of of a problem, so.
Have a helmet, right?
You have to, of course, you have to follow all the standard rules and regulations of a regular bike, um, so we're trying to get all that information out to the public. Cause there, there is some uh unknowns out there about e-bikes, you know, if you just, if you're shopping online, you might be buying an illegal one and people don't know that, so. Um, it's kind of a new industry and municipalities are trying to grapple with how to uh best regulate that. And we're, we're just, we wanna first start out by raising awareness, so.
Is there an age limit on those too?
Yeah, there is. Yes, there, there is, um, I think you have to be eighteen or or older, um, so if 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 you're not, you really can't be uh riding them.
Michael, that's a great note, I mean, we've talked to the chief many times about that, it's becoming a huge problem. And with back to school coming up, I can just imagine, you know, what's gonna go on with them and the scooters also.
Yeah.
You know, and then you take into account, you know, you have to charge the battery and the storage and the fires that have been reported, it's a big deal. So I'm glad that PDs, you were taking care of that.
Yeah, no, thank you, yeah, it's um, and it's great that our CTV team is also working diligently too to try to get that out there. So I thank everybody for the collaboration on that, um, also, I was actually with trustee Chip Marin yesterday at the um, at the New York Civic August barbecue. Um, it was really nice to see all the community, everybody's very happy with the board, um, you know, they're very happy with all the new water quality projects. Uh, New York is also happy with Trap Pond, so a big thank you to the board uh from the New York Civic. So and uh thank you to Ch- uh Chip Marin for also helping us, uh, you know, on some trustee-related issues as well.
Yeah, can I, I just mentioned real quick, you know, the change in uh looking at our projects first from a town's perspective. From the water quality has made a huge difference, the ability for the highway department and for the trustees to get involved with a lot of projects. That never would have been looked at before is a tremendous use of uh water quality funds, I'm really happy with that.
When I started on this board, it was very heavy to where it was pretty much all, all the water quality projects we were looking at were for the villages. And so we got a lot from residents about how, you know, the villages, because they had people to write these requests and to request the funding. They were getting a lot of the funding and, you know, the fact that we're now looking internally and and, you know, doing projects within our hamlets is great. Um, were you finished?
Yeah, just a big thank you to the board for uh helping move that ahead.
And I just had two follow-ups on two things, one was the e-bikes, that the um, the pedal, the electric assisted bikes with pedals. Are legal if you're under eighteen, it's the ones that don't have the pedals that are.
Oh, is that right?
Treated like, basically, they're treated like, like a motorcycle or a moped.
Correct.
And the other thing that parents need to really be aware of is I've seen a lot of kids on them with just bicycle helmets, which are really insufficient for the speeds. That these things go, they really need to be wearing DOT-approved, full-on, you know, motorcycle helmets. Because, you know, I, I'm so like grateful that we haven't had any, you know. Major, you know, there's been injuries, there's been, you know, some minor things, but I I I really did anticipate this summer with the amount of these that are out there. There being more, you know, safety issues and and god forbid a major accident involving a child. Um, but the other thing I wanted to follow up on was, to your point, Maria, was the um emergency services. After the the West Hampton, you know, wildfires this past summer, we did give Ryan Murphy has the ability now to put out alerts himself. He doesn't have to go through CRC if they're not in on the weekend, so we did, we did improve that, I believe. So that he can now and PD can also put out alerts if they need to, so.
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, the fire department's also found out that their radios didn't necessarily match up with the county. And now they've all gone on to the same system, so everybody can communicate with each other and the county at the same time without having any difficulties on that.
Good.
So, Michael, on the CTV, if they're doing like a PSA on the bikes, is it something that they can put in a form that they can give to the individual schools? To put out on their websites?
Yeah, one hundred percent, yeah, that's a great idea, Rick, thanks.
And maybe the, maybe the schools can push it out on like Parent Square, send the parents a link to it.
Hundred percent, yeah, that's a great idea, I'll, I'll talk to.
Cause that's really who we need to get to.
Yeah, yeah, they're just finalizing the video, working with chief to make sure it's good and then we'll get it out there.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, no one else has any other comments, then I move to go into executive session to discuss acquisitions and confidential legal advice and then close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.